The time is 6:00 PM and I'm calling this meeting to order. How's everybody doing, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we didn't have an executive session. I now ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm sorry, not the um. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. I'm now going to call the roll. District 1 Jasmine Bowles, is she coming or? Okay, at this moment, she's absent. District 2 Mark Christmas.
Present.
District 3 Dr. Jesse Goree, she's absent today. District 4 Ms. Victoria Williams.
Present.
District 5 Dr. De Haney.
Here.
District 6 Vice Chair Mary Baker.
Present.
District 7 Ms. Sabrina Hill.
Present.
District 8 Ms. Joy Tellis Cooper.
She's here.
She's here.
She is here. She stepped away for a second. And District 9, which is myself, Benny Straker. Superintendent Dr. Anthony Smith.
Present.
Senior Deputy Superintendent Dr. Douglas Hendricks. Board Attorney Mr. Clem Doyle.
Present.
Assistant to the Superintendent Ms. Alicia Battle.
Present.
Assistant to the Deputy Superintendent Ms. Dawn Biles. And we're joined here with our Board Interns Adrian Franquez, Edith Perez, and Kingston Parrish. They're actually running this meeting this evening. Their bosses on vacation, so everything that you see happening tonight. Oh, Ms. Bowles just stepped in. So I called you, so Ms. Bowles is present also. The interns are actually running the meeting tonight, so everything that you see going on tonight is ran by them. Okay, let me take a moment out to read the ethics statement. In accordance with Board Policy BH, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and the appearance of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict with respect to any matter scheduled to come before the board at this meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved. Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda, but I do think that we have one change to the agenda. Am I correct, Dr. Smith? We're going to pull something?
Uh, no, I'm, we.
The consent agenda?
A request was made and I did not allow for it to be part of this meeting night, so.
No, but it's actually listed on our agenda for RFQ 2601 construction material. What was that?
That was not what was requested in the agenda before.
Okay, so we're still going forward with the RFQ.
Okay.
Right, Mr. Polk, am I correct? Are we still going forward with the RFQ? That's listed here? Okay, because we had one omission in there that needed to be corrected, correct? All right, so we'll acknowledge that omission and get it corrected for us to vote on the consent agenda. For next week, right. Or, Ms. Biles, do we add it to the business agenda?
Right.
Got you, so we're pulling it from the consent agenda.
That's a long consent.
All right, so let me just do this and I apologize for this. I'm looking at an RFQ 2601.
Capital improvements purchasing.
Right.
It's an additional item that they requested for purchasing supplement or corrective purchasing report came from distance services. It was not sent until Friday, Alprichet said.
All right, Mr. Polk, I need you to help me out with this. I'm looking at, and I apologize to everybody. I'm just trying to make sure that before we move forward, we're all talking about the same thing. I'm looking on my agenda right now at an RFQ 2601 Construction Material Testing and Inspection Services. That's on the consent agenda. Isn't that the one that had the missing contractor on there?
So that's supposed to be corrected and voted on next week.
So they're going to put it in that one for next week.
So we're going to pull it from the consent agenda, am I correct?
No, I think they're going to talk about it tonight.
You'll talk about it tonight. You'll add that omission in there and then we'll be able to vote for it next week on the consent agenda. Am I correct? Ms. Biles, you got that, am I? Mr. Dr. Smith?
Yeah, that's fine.
I just want to make sure that we're not voting for something that we'd think is, is, okay, so what was that?
Incomplete.
Right, okay, all right. So there is no adjustments to the agenda this evening. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? Ms. Baker?
I'm moved.
Ms. Hill?
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote? All right, it's unanimous. There are no recommendations from the executive session. We didn't have one. Board member updates, who's ready to start? Because I know some of you wanted to. You'll start?
Mine is true.
All right, I'll get everybody. I'm going to be going in different orders. Go ahead, Ms. Tellis.
Okay, good afternoon. Good afternoon, the only updates that I have tonight is for an announcement is Commissioner Reeves is having a Halloween carnival at Rex Park on 10/31 from 5:00 PM to 8:30. I will be there with a table for District 8 School Board, so please bring your kids and stop by for some fun. The other announcement that I have is we have a birthday tonight. Mr. Eugene Harrington from the Finance Department, so if we could all just give him a happy birthday.
I'll go be. Thank you, Ms. Tellis. Go ahead, Mr. Christmas.
First, I want to thank the DES Department for coming out to our special needs forum on Friday. Also want to recognize that Clayton Eagles will be playing in the semi championship game on Saturday with Halston County. We'll be in Halston County. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. Ms. Williams.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say if you didn't get a chance to come out to the ribbon cutting they had last Monday, you missed the treat at the new Forest Park Middle School. If you get a chance to go by and see it. And Forest Park High School is having a food giveaway this Thursday at 11:00 AM. And don't forget to vote November 4th.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Williams. Ms. Bowles, are you ready? Go for it.
Good evening, everyone. I actually have three buckets I want to address. The first one is about how right now is early voting for the Public Service Commission. And the Public Service Commission is one of maybe several things on your ballot right now, but I hope you know how important it is. And if you don't know, I just wanted to give you a few updates. One, this is the first time in almost five years that the PSC has had an election, and this is the sole governing body responsible for your energy rates. And that maintains the energy rate hikes that you've also been experiencing. This is also a space where you can think about the decision makers on power grid priority. They can literally choose a daycare center or a data center. And the people in those seats are up to us. And those are decisions that we can make as soon as right now, but at the latest next Tuesday. The second update I wanted to share is just a little closer to home. I know many of us have been, hopefully not consumed by the news, but paying attention nonetheless. And so just to update you all on how the federal shutdown might impact some of us here at home, just to be mindful that according to the 2022 census data, over 75,000 people here in Clayton County rely on SNAP benefits. That's 21,000, excuse me, over 21% of our total county population. But as you know, here at CCPS, we feed all of our scholars. I want you to also just think about how we can support each other during that time. And I think that leads me to my last update, which is just some resources. If you or anyone you know needs support, you can text or call 211. That is the United Ways Resource Line. And then also feedingGeorgia.org has a constant list of food banks. That's all for me, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bowles. Next up is Dr. Haney.
Hello, everyone. Just want to recognize Jonesboro High School, they were traveling down to Bethune-Cookman. Great request for them to be down there. Also, back on October 13th, if you all noticed, between the Falcons and the Bills, the majestic Cardinals performed halftime with Jeezy, which was really a major event for them as well amongst all the other accolades they've received. Also, they have been keeping up their grade point average as of their academics, and so they are receiving scholarships as we speak. I'm just having a conversation with Dr. Goodwin in regards to that. Also, one of our very own Dawn will have her birthday celebrated on Wednesday, as I was told. So let's give it up for Dawn. So those are my updates.
Thank you so much, Dr. Haney. Ms. Baker.
Okay, we've had a very, very busy week. Just to piggyback on Ms. Williams, the ribbon cutting at Forest Park Middle School was fantastic. It's amazing what they did with such little land to give it such a wonderful school. There were two gun violence or safety pep rallies at Jonesboro High School this week. I went to one on Tuesday where the students signed oaths to use something other than gun violence, to use their words to help others to do that. And then the safety pep rally, which I give kudos to Dr. Simpson for really giving the kids an insight of their future and, you know, telling his story, because sometimes it's hard to tell your own story. Saturday, we had the breast cancer walk. I think we had, I don't know how many more people than we did last year, but it was incredible. And then after that was the sneaker shuffle for our homeless division, which now is McKinney-Vento. We're calling MVP Department. And some incredible, those kids were so excited for those shoes. I was excited. But one thing, I would just want you to know that they're going to start their fundraiser this year for Christmas, and they're asking everyone to give gift cards for the families so that the families can decide how they want to use that money to buy gifts for their children and such. And they're asking for them to be at least $25, and I'm sure anybody in that department can help you give. And it is the season to get started, so that's about it, I think.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Baker.
In my update, I want to piggyback off of Dr. Haney. I was at that game with the Jonesboro Band, and it was awesome, like it was amazing. It was, it was a nationwide event. I'm proud of them, they did an excellent job. And kudos to our superintendent, Dr. Smith, for that appointment of the band director. I see, I see it paying off already, so thank you for that. I also want to, this evening, I want to acknowledge the passing of Mr. Paris Belzer. Say the last name again? Belzer. Belzer. A beloved member of Eddie White Middle Academy family since 2010. He survived by his wife, Ms. Nikia Boyd-Belzer, a school counselor for Michelle Obama STEM Elementary, and by his son. We ask that you keep Ms. Boyd-Belzer, Belzer, the Belzer family, and the entire Eddie White community in your thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. Let's pause for a moment of silence for this family.
Thank you. The last person tonight is Ms. Ms. Hill, and I believe you have a video that needs to be seen.
Yes, but that'll, I'll, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I just want to, as we begin our board work session, reflect on the importance of education, what it truly means and how we define it. I'd like to share a true example of a portrait of a graduate born, educated, and now serving right here in Clayton County District 1, our very own board member, Ms. Jasmine Bowles. Embodies the values, excellence, and commitment that our educational system strives to instill in every student. Her day job had a Senate Committee testimony stand as a powerful reminder of why our core business, educating and preparing our scholars for success, matters so deeply.
Good afternoon Chairman Jones and members of the committee. Thank you so much for having me. I'm joined today with my colleague.
Sorry about that.
I thought we were going to see.
I'll get you to sit right there.
You better have to come take this away from us.
I'll get you.
Good afternoon Chairman Jones and members of the committee. Thank you so much for having me. I'm joined today with my colleague, Go Get You, who's going to help me on the tech. And ultimately, I want to thank you all for this opportunity to speak with you directly today, particularly after hearing such powerful testimony from the previous speakers. My name is Jasmine Bowles, and I am the Executive State Director of 9 to 5 Georgia, and I'm also a caregiver. 9 to 5 Georgia is a part of a national organization called the National Association of Working Women. We are a grassroots member-led organization that advocates for worker protections for families and working women here in Georgia. We have members all across the state, and we have bases right here in metro Atlanta, but also in Albany and Savannah. Later, I'm honored to introduce you to one of our members, Joanna, whose voice carries the weight of so many Georgians who are doing caregiving work in the shadows from our rural communities. Today, Joanna will share her story, but first, I really want to anchor us in the broader reality we witness throughout our work.
Thank you, everyone. I apologize for our audio, but I just wanted to share an example of not only does Ms. Bowles work tirelessly here as a board member, but the work that she does in her day job is just phenomenal. To see her before that Senate Committee and to speak and advocate and work diligently for the rights of others, particularly women. So I wanted to highlight that because she is a portrait of a graduate, which is our core business and why we gather twice a month to talk about our education and how we can make sure our children have that high-quality education. And so I just wanted to highlight that because I felt that that should be an example of what we strive for.
Fantastic, thank you so much, so much, Ms. Hill. We will also have that video that you just seen. We'll have it posted on our new board social media platform. So that's Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook. The interns will get that on there tomorrow, so you'll be able to go right into our social media and see that full video on Facebook. So definitely tune in and listen to that. Dr. Smith, the updates are now, the meeting is now yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Vice Chairwoman, members of the board, staff, and community. Thank you, Ms. Hill, for acknowledging one of my former students and a very valuable member of this board. I too had the pleasure of witnessing her address the committee as they plan to advocate for very important issues at the state level, and I was so proud. And I'm glad I witnessed her strong advocacy and the way in which she carries herself and really supports this community in such a phenomenal way. So thank you, ma'am. I'm excited to share that Clayton County Public Schools received multiple recognitions at the 2025 American Association of Adapted Sports Program Aspire Awards, celebrating excellence in adapted athletics and allowing students with physical disabilities to participate in competitive sports. Our very own Clayton Eagles team received the Education-Based Program Award. Ms. Kyler Rae Brown, a Clayton County Public Schools graduate, received the 2024-2025 Varsity Most Valuable Player. the 2024-2025 Varsity Most Valuable Player Award. So, we're so proud of her. Also, our very own Mr. Mark Christmas, board member District Two, received the prestigious Eli Wolf Advocacy Award. And everybody knows, Mr. Christmas, that is his baby, and he is so deserving of that acknowledgement last night. So, congratulations, Mr. Christmas. Congratulations to our Department for Exceptional Students, Athletes, and Supporters for Championing Inclusion and Ensuring Every Student Has the Opportunity to soar. Also, throughout October, Clayton County Public Schools joined communities across the nation in supporting Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This past Saturday, our annual Clayton County Public Schools Breast Cancer Walk drew over 1,400 participants, Ms. Baker, our largest turnout to date. We proudly honored, we proudly honored 12 Clayton County Public Schools survivors at special survivor stops during the walk, where they shared powerful stories of strength and resilience. It was a day filled with unity, love, and hope as our community school, I mean, community stood together in pink in the fight against breast cancer. I would like to thank the Engagement Department, led by Ms. Shakira Rice and her team within the Division of Student Support Services, as well as all divisions, departments, and volunteers, who collaboration made this incredible event possible. I would like to take this time to share a special video clip that highlights a member of our Clayton County Public Schools family, who is a breast cancer survivor. Her name is Ms. Allegra Hurd. She is a pre-K lead teacher at Lake City Elementary School. Here's just a glimpse into her journey. Her complete story will be shared on our platforms tomorrow morning.
I'll get you sitting right there with your.
Yes, I beat breast cancer, but still, I'm on that journey. I still have to go every year to get tested. I still have six months appointments, stuck by needles, have to be in machines. So, even though I won breast cancer, I'm still fighting every day because... I don't know what I was going to do. If I stopped moving, I might not have made it.
At first, I didn't really understand what was going on. My mom just randomly got sick out of nowhere, you know? Like she said, she's not good at showing that something's wrong. So, for a long time, we didn't know. Like, you, you would never know that something's wrong. She never showed it on her face. She never cried. It was just like, okay, if we're going to go in here, I need somebody to come with me. I got in the car every time, like...
I cried, but I cried in the shower because I didn't want anybody to see me break down because I had to be strong because I felt like if I wasn't strong, they would give up hope. And I didn't need them to give up hope. I didn't have time to think. I didn't have time to process. I just know I hadn't been through, from Monday through Thursday, I hadn't been into every machine. There was cat scan, bone scan. My body took a toll, but I came to work out of the whole time, from chemo to surgery to radiation. I think I stayed out one time, and that was only for one week. And that was only because they was like, you have to stay out. You can't be at work. So...
Fantastic. Wow. Good story.
I would like to thank the award-winning Communications Division and its production team, led by Ms. Jada Dawkins and Mr. Ronald Jones Shields, for capturing Ms. Hurd's incredible journey. Well done. Mr. Chairman and board members, at this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Cynthia James to bring further updates.
Good evening.
You guys hear me?
No.
With just a few more meetings out from being able to have our board meetings at a much more sophisticated, with a much more reliable technology system in place. So, just bear with us. We getting there.
Do we have the PowerPoint? Good evening, Mr. Chair, Ms. Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Smith, staff, and community at large. My name is Dr. Cynthia James, and I am the Director of Second Language Learners, ESAL. I am here to update you all on the Hispanic Heritage Month. So, the slide is ready.
Okay.
Thank you. Next slide, please.
Thank you very much.
Clayton County Public School proudly celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month, recognizing and honoring the rich traditions, diverse cultures, and significant contributions of our Hispanic and Latina students, families, and community members. These events not only celebrated culture, but also strengthened our district's commitment to inclusion, belonging, and appreciation for the diverse communities that make Clayton County Public Schools so special, reflecting our shared pride in cultural heritage and community engagement. And I would like to share with you all some of the events that took place. Well, Stillwell School of the Arts kicked off celebrations with a performance, a performance hour in honor of Hispanic heritage. Several schools hosted wax museums, art walks, musicals, family nights, luncheons, and Taste of Our Culture celebrations, featuring music, dance, and authentic foods. The ESAL and Rural Language Departments led district celebrations, and the International Center hosted fall ESL parent workshops covering topics such as RTI, MTSS, attendance, healthy families, nutrition, and school choice. Eddie White Middle, Forest Park Middle, and Kilpatrick Elementary showcased students' talent through art displays, performances, and cultural dinners. All schools held their Spanish Spelling Bee's, selecting winners to compete. And the third annual Clayton County Public Schools Spanish Spelling Bee to be held tomorrow, actually, Tuesday, October 28th at 9:00, actually. It starts at 9:00 a.m. here at the Performance Art Center, and we invite you all. And those are some of the highlights of Hispanic American, Hispanic Month.
Thank you. Question?
Not really a question. I appreciate all the things that you have done, because over the years, we haven't celebrated as much as I thought we should. My challenge to you is maybe in the future, we have authors come in or dance musical groups. I don't know about anybody else, but I love a good mariachi band. So, just, that's just something to look forward to in the future, possibly doing?
Of course. And several of the schools did have dance groups and celebrations of that nature, but I think the, we have to be more intentional about inviting and getting announcements out to all.
Yeah. One of the things Ms. Anna Cox did a couple of years ago is had a dance group from the Asian community come, and I saw it here, and it was, it was fantastic. And I just, I really think our children would enjoy seeing stuff like that.
Excellent suggestions. We'll work on that.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Okay. At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call up Mrs. Shakira Rice to give an update relative to engagement.
Ms. Rice, you have, you have the clicker there, right?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Straker, Vice Chair Baker, all members of the board, Dr. Smith, all staff, and community at large. Again, I am Shakira Rice, providing a high-level overview and updates for the Engagement Department. Okay. This summer, our staff, our team spent time researching and also gleaning from experience to develop frameworks for student engagement, family engagement, employee engagement, and community engagement. These frameworks were presented to our principals during our Student Support Services Leadership Retreat. These frameworks were introduced as a way to standardize the approach to the work in terms of engaging all of our stakeholders. They are very, they are pretty lengthy, and I will not go through those tonight, but we can send those to you if you'd like to see those. But there are three different areas where all of the frameworks had some information regarding fostering inclusive engagement. That means it's making sure that all of the stakeholders feel connected to CCPS, they feel respected, they feel seen, they feel valued, and they feel heard. This is very important as we move forward with any type of engagement that we have with all of our stakeholders. We also wanted to make sure that all of the frameworks encompass creating an atmosphere that supports exceptional customer service. People will always remember you based upon how you make them feel during your interaction. And also, making sure that we have professional, we show professionalism when dealing with all of our stakeholders and being very responsive at every level to all stakeholders. And last but not least, we wanted to make sure all frameworks encompass actively incorporating cultural awareness. Ms. Baker, you just, you stated that. And also relevance when, in terms of all interactions, communications, and in the decision-making process. One example that is included inside of our family engagement framework is just simply making sure that we use family, use language that families and stakeholders can truly understand. In the world of education, we have a lot of acronyms, a lot of professional jargon. And oftentimes, our community and our parents, they would not understand that type of jargon. So, just simply being intentional with speaking to them in practical terms, presenting information in family-friendly ways, community-friendly ways, student-friendly ways. Those, that information is included inside of our family engagement framework as well, including all frameworks. Now, our student engagement framework, three key areas of focus, making sure that when we curate engagement opportunities for our students, we are keeping in mind, keeping in mind that we want to make some real-world connections for our students, making sure that these opportunities are meaningful to the students. So, we, we have conversations with our students quite often to hear what it is they would like to see included into their opportunities that we have for them. Also, of course, we support the four E's: enrollment, enlistment, employment, and entrepreneurship. And some key initiatives that we have under the, included with the bucket of student engagement, our first-generation college trips. We take four of these trips a year. And the unique thing about these particular college trips, they're for first-generation college students and for one of their parents to attend with them. Because, again, if this is the first time that a child, a student, is going to college, it's the first time that the parent is experiencing college preparedness as well. So, last year was the first year we began this, and it was quite powerful, very emotional. Some of the parents became very emotional, even stepping into the cafeteria because no one was there to tell you what to do. And so, we, I had to calm down one of the parents because her daughter just went straight to the pizza line and started getting her food, but the parent just stood there frozen because she didn't know what to do. So, again, that is very, we think, beneficial to the family as a whole in terms of this being, making, making sure our kids are successful. We're going to skip down to college send-offs because we had some, one of those, what, two of those first-generation college students and their parent come back to this year's college send-off and provide some tidbits of information for our current parents. And so, that was very powerful for the parents to hear from another parent who just experienced being that first-generation college parent. And a new initiative, Dr. Smith gave us permission to begin this year, is a district-wide Student Government Association, because, again, it's about student advocacy and student voice. And so, we are standing that initiative up, and we will be working very closely with the Social Studies Department with that initiative. Working with the principals, they like to see celebrations, academic celebrations for their kids. And so, we were able to work with Principal Brenda Ross to head up a top 10% celebration. Youth and Notice, we all know that that is for, it started originally to highlight our staff members. But thanks to the generosity from some of our community partners, we are now able to also notice two students each time. And those students will each receive a $100 gift card for Going Above and Beyond, and their principals will nominate them each month. And last but not least, and this is not an exhaustive list, this is just some of the initiatives we wanted to include tonight, we take our scholars on nursing home visits, and we do these four times a year. And again, this is a way to build empathy in our kids and just foster that sense of humanity and giving back to our community. Our next engagement is, of course, family engagement and empowerment. We like to use the word empowerment. It's one thing to give a person a fish, but it's another thing to teach them how to fish. Okay, we got it. Okay. Let's get her ready to go back to that principal voice. Okay. And so, again, with that empowerment, it is just empowering our families, every member of that family. And we do this, again, by trying to curate meaningful opportunities because we listen and we read the feedback. But more importantly, we're, we're able to work with all parent liaisons in order to get a lot of this work done. And we asked some to come tonight, just to kind of be here to support as well, and also to strengthen that homeschool partnership, because, again, it has to be that successful partnership in order for not just the student, but the family to be successful. And, again, building that capacity through collaboration. None of the work, none of the engagement, none of the events that you see come from the Engagement Department happen just with engagement. happen just with Engagement. It's a very small team, so everything, every event we put on, we are collaborating with one or more departments or divisions within Clayton County Public Schools. Now, some key initiatives regarding family engagement. Passport to Success, we're very excited to launch this, this year. Passport to Success, just to summarize it, is where our families receive stamps along the journey to success. And the way they receive those stamps on that passport, if they attend an academic meeting, any type of meeting or engagement opportunities at the schools and or with the district, they will receive a stamp. And the second part about this, our community came together. Any, once a parent receives a full stamp, some businesses within the community will incentivize or reward them for that type of engagement. Some of those may be a haircut for every member of the family, a hairdo for every member of the family, a free family meal for the family. So we do have our community stepping up to say, yes, we want to encourage our families to be more engaged. Our Fall Family Photo Shoot, again, everything is centered around working as a family unit, not apart. We work together as families. Our parents again attend those college field trips. We have monthly meetings at the schools. Parent liaisons are holding three informational sessions. Those are academic in nature, and one always involve infinite campus. Because again, we want to make sure all parents are connected to what it is their student is doing every single day. Looking at the grades, checking attendance, but more importantly, being engaged. We have food giveaways, events such as mother-son dance, daddy-daughter dance. And of course, we have family nights at the Falcons, the Hawks, and Skyhawks. And the tickets for these are typically at a $20 price tag so that it can be affordable to all of our families if they choose to go out for a family night at one of these events. Community engagement. Of course, again, we are a microcosm of the larger community. So we reflect all the values, the challenges, and the strengths of our community. So we cannot do this work alone. And some key initiatives that we have, we have our Village on Patrol program. And this is where our community and parents are volunteering in our schools. And we had some of them come tonight. If you can stand. If you notice, our Village on Patrol, they have a certain shirt they wear when they are volunteering. So anytime you see those shirts, thank you. And we have one with a birthday, Ms. Twyla Townsend. You may recognize that last name Townsend. She has a birthday today. But Ms. Susan Nash, will you please wave your hand? Ms. Susan Nash is a very active Village on Patrol, but the special thing about Ms. Nash, she integrated Nor Clayton High School in 1969. So that's the caliber, that's the quality of people that we have coming in to say, I want to be part of the solution with Clayton County Public Schools. And Dr. Smith, Ms. Nash wants to meet with you. She said you owe her something. Okay, we also have our SAFE program. About two years ago, we had some people come to the board meeting. Some, some of our elders, they had formed a group, and they wanted to become more involved in the schools. And so we heard that cry. And so we sat down and we curated this particular opportunity for them. It's called the SAFE program, Sitting at the Feet of Our Elders. So the majority of our elementary schools, I think with the exception of maybe four or five now, they have a SAFE volunteer, the grandparent for their school. They read to the kids, their, one shows up, well, several of them every single day just to be there. And she, she often states that the kids give her more than she can ever give them at the school. And we have some of them with us here tonight. So when you ever see this particular shirt, theirs is blue. I see you, Stan. Oh, no, we have a couple. Their is blue. And the image on the front of their shirt was designed by one of our students from Mount Zion Primary, Principal Bryant. One of her students won that design contest. And so we're, we include our students with everything that we try to do. So when they see that shirt, they know that many of them entered the design contest for that. Of course, our faith-based partnerships, we have, each and every one of our high schools have a partner, a church partner. And we go out to a lot of these events, and the churches are there. The churches are serving juice, they're serving snacks, they're helping to volunteer at the schools because again, we can't do this alone. Of course, we have our district signatory events, our Breast Cancer Walk, Day One, Back to School Bash, and our Veterans Day program that is actually coming up November the 13th. We offer, we have business lunches. We do this in clusters because we want the different clusters, we want those businesses to invest into their cluster schools, their neighborhood schools. And we want our principals to invite those businesses in so they can help them with those heavy lifts and those heavy loads. And of course, we have a partnership also with Cavalry Refuge that anytime we have families or teachers experiencing hardships, Cavalry Refuge has been my go-to to help parents sometimes if they need somewhere to live temporarily. And last but not least, we have our employee engagement. Again, our motto, Happy Staff, Happy Life. And this is also just making sure our employees feel seen, they feel respected, they feel heard. And some of these key initiatives, of course, our Signature Dinner and Denim at the beginning of the year. We follow the National Education Appreciation Calendar. Every event you see on that calendar, we make sure that we provide some type of token of appreciation in terms of a luncheon or some type of gift during every National Education Appreciation Calendar. We have Employee Suit Yourself, and you mentioned it was Mr. Harrington's birthday, Ms. Tellis Cooper. Mr. Harrington has probably donated about 200 suits to our Employee Suit Yourself closet, about 200 suits. So thank, I see Andy, Andy actually donated his father's ties to the, to the boys for the Boys Conference. So thank you. Dr. Hendricks has donated suits. We had one teacher had, had it on actually one day, and see, I got Dr. Hendricks. He was proud to say that. So again, that is an opportunity for any staff member if they need anything. We have male clothes, we have female clothing. Cynthia James probably gave us every piece of her grandchildren clothes and new clothes that she bought. So we have for children. And guess what? We have household items. We have furniture, living room furniture, bedroom furniture, bedroom furniture. So when a teacher needs or a staff member needs something, we want to be able to help them because if we can remove a berry for a teacher, they can be stronger for our kids in the classroom. And again, some of our, this is an example, community partners, South Atlanta Injury Attorneys, they provide $50 a month to every teacher and student of the month at the Jonesboro Schools. Of course, You've Been Noticed, and they get $500 a month. Our Teacher of the Year Gala, we really enjoy working with our Teachers of the Year. Do we have any with us? We have, there, some of them are here with us representing. We work very closely with them. Not only, we don't just stop at that Teacher of the Year Gala. They have a monthly, a monthly experience. Because if they're going to be the creme de la creme of Clayton County or their, of their various schools, we have to make sure that they feel very appreciated for their honor. This year, we kicked it off, I think, with Ms. Tellis Cooper and Ms. Baker. They had a little chat or two with them. But every month, they have some type of experience with community members or with us. And now we take them on an annual trip. And so they will find out soon where their, their annual trip would be. Of course, we have the retirement celebration, we have our Employee Spirit Week, we have Teacher Appreciation Week. Now we have our Honor Guard. Dr. Smith was very serious about creating this. This is where our Honor Guard, anytime we have the untimely death of a staff member, we make contact with the family. We make contact with the family to, to see if they would like for us to bring the Honor Guard and honor the life of their loved one, which was our employee as well. Because oftentimes, we spend more waking hours at work during the day than we do at home. So we want to make sure we honor the service that their employee, their, their loved one provided to us. And so we offer that as well through our department, and also employee workforce housing to our employees as well, employees in need. If they're just moving in, we do have that collaboration with Clayton State where we can offer that housing to them. And this is a copy of the National Employee Appreciation Calendar. Every one of those lines is an event that we host to show appreciation for any class unemployed within Clayton County Public Schools. And last but not least, we have the several pictures to encompass some of the work. At the top there, you have some scholars we took to the nursing homes. We went back during Christmas time, and all of the scholars, that was Sequoia Middle School. The scholars, we didn't ask, but we spent time with them, talking, talking to them about empathy and giving back. They purchased with their own money a gift for each and every resident at the assisted living facility. And down on the left-hand bottom, that was at Mount Zion High School. That is a Family Vision Board Night. I think Ms. Williams, she's been to one of those. But we sit down with families and ask them to come up with a plan for your family. Come up with a plan and post it somewhere so it's a visual reminder. That's one of our young ladies from Nor Clayton Middle School. She was one of the You've Been Noticed winners with her $100 card. And at the bottom, that's the daddy-daughter picture from the daddy-daughter dance. So if you have any questions, that's the end of our report.
Ms. Rice, that was quite impressive. You're doing a, a lot in regards to engagement. Dr. Young, I, we have a dashboard, correct? We have a, is there any way to integrate the, the activities that she's doing so that we can get a number count of some of the activities that she's doing? For the purpose, board members, of when the end of the year comes and we're talking about budget, we can look at the things that, you know, are highly impact and, you know, make our decisions around that. Is there a way to integrate some of the metrics? Right. 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 So for instance, how many attendees came to some of these events or, and, and some type of metric, and this is your, your world of expertise, where it's showing the correlation of, of how it's impacting the student achievement? You know, or family engagement? So I think that would be excellent for the board members to see those numbers on a dashboard.
Thank you. We're working with technology to, to try to determine if there's a correlation between the increased infinite campus, parent access hits to the decrease in missing assignments and also attendance.
Right. Those are the things that I would, I would love to see and, and be presented. Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams, I'll be right with you. I think Cooper first, then Williams, then Haney.
Yes, ma'am.
Get to your mic.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. And again, I had no idea. Y'all are little busy bees over there. But a couple of things that I wanted to ask you. First of all, great job. What type of feedback have you gotten from the teachers, the student, the staff, I mean, the community? I know you had three different buckets. I know they have no complaints. But just to hear some of the things that they're saying, what, what do they think about the initiatives that your department is carrying out? That's number one. And then number two, with the You've Been Noticed, with the student part of it, what grade levels? So I know that you answered one of the questions, how's it determined? And it's determined by the principals, but what grade levels are participating with the You've Been Noticed?
Okay, thank you for those questions. Number one, thoughts or feedback from stakeholders? We do give surveys and for feedback. And oftentimes, it's regarding the type of food or what type of food they would like to be served. And other times, ways in which they would like to engage. For instance, we heard from our, our older, our seasoned citizens, and that's why we went back and created the SAFE program. During the Back to School Bash, this time, we received about 1,300 parent surveys. And from those surveys, that's how we then build our family engagement initiatives. So everything we build, we build it with the stakeholder in mind. We listen to them. Our Teachers of the Year, we often ask them, and they give us the ideas. They, they give us, they gave us the ideas for the Boys Conference because we go to the, the people who are actually, you know, on the front lines doing that. And with You've Been Noticed, that's any scholar, any elementary, middle, or high school principal kid entered their scholar and into that drawing for You've Been Noticed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Hello, Ms. Rice. How you doing?
I'm good, Ms. Williams. Thank you.
Okay, I have three questions. How do the students sign up for, if they want to participate in the college tours or the nursing homes? Is something that's out and available to every student, or do they have to?
Yes, yes. With the You've Been, with the First Generation College Tours, we send those flyers out to all the schools. And we also, CCPS Info sends those out as well, so the parents see those and the students see those. And based upon how many we can take, this first trip would be November 14th, November 14th to Payne College. And now we can take 100 students and 100 parents. And so that flyer will go out this week, and so once we hit 100, we'll have to cut it off.
Does it matter if it be middle school or high school?
It doesn't matter. We've all, we've taken elementary, middle, and high school scholars.
Okay. Second question, when is this Fall Photo Shoot? Because last year, you had it during one of our meetings, and I missed it. So I would like to date now.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Daphne Andrews will get that out to you as soon as possible.
And the third one, I had a, a parent approach me, well, I guess a grandparent, about volunteering at the Ford Park Middle School. How do I get, what do I send them to to sign up to be a part of the SAFE program?
The parent liaison.
The parent liaison.
The parent liaison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Haney?
This is really a kudos. Just, I'm very proud to know that we are on the map, listening to the radio V103. I hear a lot of our teachers are making shout-outs. Greg Street makes it a point to highlight Clayton County Public Schools. I know that your team ran, often visits this station and put us on the map and highlight what we're doing. I've heard Dr. Hendricks out there as well. Just to hear that presence and thanks to communication as well, just to hear that we are above. And then just to hear it on Friday, how they highlighted all of our, Dr. Mr. Townsend, you've been proud of that, how they highlighted our, our athletic department, V103. And so I was very proud to hear that as I was leaving the Special Education Forum on Friday. So it's just good to see what your team is doing. All I ask is that when you have these events, just in the board, just the calendar, so that we'll know, so that we can plan our schedules accordingly, so that we can continue to support your initiatives that you and your team are doing. And personally, I want to thank you and your team for assisting me with the leadership. The Legacy Builders Conference and the boys really appreciated it. I saw some on Thursday at Jonesboro High School, and they were really excited about it. And as you know, we've already had discussions about the little people, and they are wanting something as well. So we'll be working on that as well. So I just want to give your team kudos. Thank you for putting Clayton County Public Schools on the map with all the initiatives. And also on the first day of school, at Riverdale High School, I seen the VOP in action. And I was almost scared to pull up in there. I would call chief. I was about freaked out because of the traffic. But nevertheless, the VOP scared me because they were really on top of their jobs. Just to see those grandparents and the synergy that they had to ensure that our students were making it okay, calming their nerves, and just being there for that new principal that's over there at Riverdale High School. So kudos again to you and your team and the VOP and all that you're doing for Clayton County Public Schools.
Thank you.
Ms. L.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Rice, for your presentation and all the great things that your team is doing. I just have one question on how do our students understand and know about enrollment, enlistment, employment, and entrepreneurship? I had the pleasure of talking to a young man who is a senior, and I asked him what was his next. And he said he didn't know. And I said, well, did you want help with that? He said, I'll figure it out. And so I just feel like some of our scholars are not getting the information as to what it looks like for them to have these opportunities available to them.
Duly noted, duly noted. We're all, all departments are working to support those four initiatives and making sure that all scholars are aware of those. And if we could just maybe get that information, we can all make sure that we're over there to wherever that was and work with all the personnel over there to ensure that all, all of the scholars are aware.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board? Any other questions, board members? Seeing none, Ms. Rice? Thank you so much for that brilliant presentation.
Before I leave, I would like to introduce this mighty, mighty team. Ms. Tiffany Brown, she keeps us all organized. Daphne Andrews, Terri Smith, and Stacy Nelson.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right.
Great job.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Rice and team. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Melvin Blocker come forward with, to do his presentation around student discipline.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Smith, and the community at large. I would just like to bring a few updates to you guys regarding discipline as we stand. Dr. Boone, would you come on down and assist me, please?
You have to click her? She should be on the podium. She stole it.
So Dr. Boone will go over the data for us real quick. I'm not sure how to work this. Okay? And then I'll come back and share the highlights.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, our superintendent, Dr. Smith, members of Clayton County community. The board members have already received a copy of our presentation, so I'll just do a very brief review of our discipline data. The first slide that you're looking at is really our historical data. And what we did here was compare financial year '24 to that of '25. And as you can see, we had, well, minor reductions in office discipline referrals that I refer to as ODR, as well as our out-of-school suspension dates. But we recorded a slight increase in school suspensions. It went from 5,141 to 5,335. That is between financial year '24 and '25. And then the next slide is, in Clayton County, we track what we refer to as our major infractions. And those ones are weapons, fighting, bullying, drugs, and gangs. And what we did here was compare the first two months of school, which is August and September of last year, 2024, and then this year, 2025. And we recorded reductions in two of the five major infractions, that is bullying and gang activity. However, there was some slight increase when we reviewed our weapons, fighting, and drugs. But the increase is not very significant in terms of numbers. And I will do just a quick overview of what the weapons are. There was no record of firearms or guns. It was more like knives, one that is less than two inches, one that is above two inches, and then some hazardous objects that our scholars may utilize as a weapon, like staples and razor blades and all that. We just wanted to be clear as far as the type of weapons that we're referring to. Okay. 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 So this one, this screen, you have our office discipline referrals for the month of August and September. We compared 2024 and 2025. And there was a slight increase as well, for the simple reason that we had a couple of group fights in some of our middle schools and high schools. So there was 10% increase, which number-wise, it's 20 and 15 when you compare '24 and '25 during the months of August and September. And this is a record of our tribunals for financial year '24, '25, and '26. And as you can see, between '24 and '25, there was an increase of roughly 25%. And from 2024, 2025 to 2025, 2026, there was an increase as well of about, there was a reduction actually from '84 to '63, but an increase in between '24 and '25. But that is just between the two months, August and September. And then just to top it up, we just want to note that even though we've noticed some, we've recorded some increase in the number of office discipline referrals that we've had, but overall, over 95% of our scholars do not have referrals at all. They have zero referrals. And that speaks to the fact that we do have a very strong PBI, STO1 supports being provided by our behavior intervention specialists, as well as the PBI school teams. And also, it speaks to the fact that majority of our students, 95% of them and over, are really compliant when it comes to behavioral expectations. But we also recognize that we do have that small margin of 5% of scholars that are struggling behavior that we really need to intensify our support. So our behavior intervention specialists will intensify their support with that population. And when we talk about intensifying support, we're looking at making sure that all of our scholars on Tier 2, that they have a behavior correction action plan. And our scholars in Tier 3 have their behavior intervention plans in place, and that we do conflict resolution classes with them individually or in small groups. And we make sure that they have behavior contracts that will deal, address the specific behaviors that they're struggling with. But overall, we will continue our PBIers proactive support with our behavior intervention specialists as well support to make sure that we sustain that strong Tier 1 that we have in place in all our schools. So at this point, I will yield to Dr. Blocker, unless you have questions.
Question. Honestly?
Baker first, Haney second. Oh, you, okay. Okay, go ahead. Please jot down your questions.
Go ahead.
So aside from all professional development that we provide for the district, teachers restored practices, enhancing student engagement in the schools, we want to just share some of the other things that we're doing as a department to reduce discipline incidents. So for example, proactive measures, district ride behavior instructional skills that the behavior intervention specialists are implementing in the schools. You can see here, conflict resolutions, lessons on empathy, respect, teamwork, interpersonal skills, and effective communication. We believe that some of these things are the proactive work that students need, you know, essential life skills to ensure that they are able to coexist with other students in the school. And here recently, we just co-mitted our Power of Peace Tour at all of the high schools. I think last week, we just co-mited over at the Alternative School with roughly about 135 students who probably make up the 5% of the data, the poor data, the poor data that we have in terms of student behavior infractions in the district. At the Alternative School, a very powerful session that day. I just want to thank the Department of Juvenile Justice for coming out and supporting us with that work. And we've been partnering with the district attorney's office, the local faith-based community, and other leaders in the district, just to try to get in front of those children. You can see here, Dr. Smith and other members of the cabinet assisted us with that. And the follow-up, students will, you know, after about 90 days, students, we will be looking at student data again. All the children who were involved in one or more fights, we will try to see whether those kids are engaged in other fights again, and we will do some positive incentive things with those students as well. And of course, you know, we have preventions to alternatives, I'm sorry, preventions and alternative suspension program. We have about 11 different types of ways that kids can avoid being suspended from school. This is no different here in our multi-tier system, and then of course, our Circle of Support Program. All right? Something that we just, we're proud to announce that our Level Up Program that's going to be piloted over at Jonesboro Middle School, where there's a mentorship program. We were able to lay some funding to get that in place for the students over at Jonesboro Middle School. There'd be about 100 sixth graders that will be receiving ongoing mentor services at that particular school. So our goal is to ensure that those children receive some adequate mentorship strategies and ensure that they are improving their behavior. The most important, we want to work on the decision-making. And of course, you know, our Care and Adult in the Building Program, we have CAP and then CAP 2.0. CAP 2.0 is expanded into, that's been an initiative across all the schools, but more importantly, we are doing check-ins with those kids, targeting behavior, and support, you know, supporting those children from a relationships-building standpoint. And then we just co-mited School Safety Week. Started the week out over at Jonesboro. I want to thank the principal of Jonesboro High School for allowing us to have Parent Night. That was, we had a huge turnout. Over 40, 50 parents showed up that night. We also had a school safety pep rally at Jonesboro High School as well. I just want to thank the members that came out. Dr. Simpson gave a powerful message that day on making sure that we ensure our schools are safe. And so I'll answer any questions at this time.
Okay. Same request, Dr. Young. If we can get those numbers on our dashboard also, so that we can, when the time comes for us to talk about budget priorities, we can look at those numbers and associate those numbers with, you know, the initiatives that you... Whichever numbers you guys can figure out metrics on. They're already on there. Okay, fantastic, fantastic. Dr. Blocker, before I get to the rest of our members, great job at keeping us at that 5% cap. When I look at other districts throughout Georgia and specifically the metro Atlanta area, they're sitting at 7 and 8%. So obviously, you're doing a wonderful job at keeping us at that cap. Obviously, we're not finished with the work, but keeping us under that 5%. If 95% of our students are not even visiting, you know, discipline issues, you know, I'm satisfied with that. But there's obviously more work to be done. Also, I have to give you kudos on conversation that you and I've had in regards to getting mentors. And I'm hoping that the program that you're piloting now will become a lot more widespread in our district. Is there any other questions, Ms. Bowles?
Well done. I'm excited, inspired, all the things. I also invite you and our whole team to just remember our internal resources. And I think an under-leveraged internal resource is your alumni base here at Clayton County Public Schools. We have talked for years about mentorship programs and all the things, but you have a love the partnership with big sisters, big brothers, but you have big sisters and big brothers right here in our neighborhoods and communities. What can we do to enlist the support of those people who do it thanklessly anyway?
Mr. Christmas?
Dr. Blocker, was it the Level Up Program that you were starting over at Jonesboro Middle?
Yes, sir. It's Big Brothers, Big Sisters program, and it's the Level of Mentorship Program.
Okay. One, you know, I appreciate you doing it at Jonesboro, but why Jonesboro when you just told me your data presented at the Alternative School that the needs were greater because of the data? And why wouldn't you pilot it there?
Well, it's more of a proactive approach. So we're not, you know, the children at the Alternative School have already made bad choices, and they have a plethora of resources already there that we're trying to redirect, we're trying to sort of reinstate them. But the students at Jonesboro, the sixth graders that just got to middle school. So what we're trying to do is prevent them from ending up in the Alternative Program or making decisions further down the road. So we want to mentor them now. It's almost like an early learning behavior process to be proactive rather than waiting till the children make bad decisions. We want to try to teach them how to make better decisions.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And, but once again, what are we doing for those scholars over at the Alternative Schools that are, that have already made bad choices to get them back on track and maybe into their home schools?
Yeah, well, we could do a lot more, you know, but we have ongoing services over there, the Alternative Program, the service of support. They have two behavior specialists assigned to that school, right? We have school psychologists, social workers, and we do a rotation of mentorships. I'm over there all the time myself personally, but we do a whole lot of conversations with those kids about getting them ready to go back to the schools. So the exit process includes, an interview includes ongoing, the kids have to meet exit criteria in order to go back to their home schools. And so they have to be successful academically, they have to be successful behavior-wise, and so they get to go back to their home schools with that by meeting exit criteria. So we don't have a real high recidivism rate once the children go back to the comprehensive school, because they receive all the services on the Charlotte Morgan over at the Alternative Program.
All right, thank, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
You just go on the org. This slideshow you showed, we don't have that over here. Can that be sent to us? The one I have only, it only has two pages. It's like a summary, but it's not the detail that you have.
Make sure.
Can you edit it to us, please? And I'm interested in the CAB program. Is the CAB program supposed to be for every student or just students y'all identify?
Every student in the school is supposed to have a care and adult in the building, every single student.
So how do y'all verify that every single student is going to have a CAB?
We can tell you right now, we're not at that, we're not at our goal. You know, we can verify it to infinite campus, and we're working diligently to get that taken care of, but we're not at our goal.
Okay, because, you know, my son's in the school, and every year I ask him about a CAB, he act like I don't know what I'm talking about.
We're working on it.
Or the, most of the kids who I ask them if they have one, they're not sure. So I'm not sure if it's for everybody or just for the ones y'all see you may need, you know, like an extra support or somebody to talk to.
Yeah, it's supposed to, it's supposed to improve connectivity, you know, between the students and the staff and the building. Kids should be able to go to an adult in the building before they make a bad choice and build a relationship with, with an adult in the building, you know, and we're not at our goal with that.
Right. So who initiates it? Is the kid going to the teacher or is the teacher kind of picking like 20 kids or how is it?
The student can initiate going to his or her CAB. Every single student is supposed to be assigned a CAB. And so the students are assigned CABs, but they get to a point where, because they don't participate in the process or participate, they don't know who their CAB is. They might not know who their CAB is. So we have to continue to reemphasize, we probably almost have to schedule some time for students to actually meet with their care and adult in the building. But, you know, we have a lot going on in the school. We don't want to interrupt instructional time, so there's so many different things going on in the school, so we can't necessarily force a principal to schedule time for students to meet with a care and adult in the building.
Well, hopefully throughout the year, they can meet with somebody because something happened. You want them to have somebody they can go to.
One time each semester.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Dr. Haney?
I had to type out my questions here. Going back to the data that Dr. E. presented, I just want to confirm, are student discipline and prevention and safety and security capturing and reporting the same major infractions data? Or are there differences between the two? Because when I'm reading this, you're saying there was an uptick, then you're saying it's a decrease, and then when the chief comes, is, you know, is this information the same, different, or indifferent? So if you can answer that, are we capturing the same data between the two departments? How is that captured? Also, in reference to your, I'm glad you put up there what the behavior specialists, their roles and functions are. How many do we currently have? How many are staffed?
Twenty.
Twenty.
By the way, in the orders, would you all stand up? I just want to acknowledge all of the members of the Department of Intervention. Just give them a round of applause for the work that they do here in Clayton County.
Okay, and so they are assigned to how many schools?
How many?
How many schools are each one of those assigned to?
They have approximately four, four schools.
Okay.
But the ones that serve the big high schools, like Mara High School and Jonesboro High School, they may just have like two. But the other ones have approximately four, if three of them have like five, if they have mostly elementary schools.
Okay. I was just asking because I'm just looking at... I was just asking because I'm just looking at what, how many we have, how many they're assigned, and what we're looking at as a data here. That's, that's, I'm just trying to put apples and apples together.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, also, well, Mr. Christmas had already asked a question. How is it that you all chose Jonesboro Middle opposed to other schools? How is that being chosen? Or so, you know, how do you all make that determination? So you've already answered that question. But I was just pretty much curious as to, um, the BIS is how many we had, how their schools are separated, how their, their workload is basically. And also that question about how the data is captured. Because if you can answer that for me, I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, safety and security are more along the lines of law enforcement. We capture our data through ODRs, through Infinite Campus, which is Office Discipline Referrals. And so we, uh, we were able to, uh, identify our five biggest, uh, uh, serious infractions and we call them our five non-negotiables, our behavior norms. And we build everything, all of our efforts around that. And so what we're reporting out is, we're reporting out based on those five behavior norms, which we believe are significant to disrupting the school, which may not necessarily coincide with law enforcement or kids breaking the law. So not every child that gets in a fight is arrested or to that effect. You understand what I'm saying? They might, but they might be involved in physical, physical, physical aggression. We capture that data, law enforcement might not.
All right, thank you.
And of course, we have, like I said, we have twenty behavior specialists that stretch across all of our schools in the district. Uh, some of them have upwards of four schools and some of them have, uh, two schools, but it would be two large high schools. And they have, they have to service each school over the course of the week.
And they're solid, right?
They're solid.
Not me, ain't nobody.
Y'all want to stand up again?
Ain't nobody trying to get rid of them.
Okay.
I know they're solid, but I'm talking about we solid with keeping them, making sure they're solid. That's what I'm talking about.
I would hope.
Okay, that's, that's what I.
Three on that.
Okay, all right, we'll get to that, thanks. Okay.
Ms. Hill?
Uh, yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Blocker, for this information. Um, and I, and I really appreciate that we are making sure that our students, even with disciplinary problems, that we are still providing resources. Um, and one question I have is, I know that we have percentage, but I would like to see numbers. How many students that we're serving per school, um, and what does that look like? And in addition to that, um, and please forgive me if I missed it because I may have stepped away. I'm not hearing that academic support. I don't, I'm not hearing, what are we doing? Because a lot of times, um, and I'm not a specialist in this area, but behavior comes from other issues, inadequacy in, uh, housing insecurity, just different things that they're dealing with. Um, how are we supporting them academically and helping them to stay on task? Um, because that empowers them. Um, when our children have knowledge, they're better. And when they feel secure in their classroom and they are able to maintain and stay on, uh, task with whatever the assignment is, that makes them feel better. So where is the academic piece that helps with this disciplinary? Because if we're getting to the root, I mean, we, I mean, I love that we're doing it, but I want us to get to the core.
Yes.
And how do we support them to, there's not even a possibility that they're talking, have to go to an alternative school? So I just want to hear more about how are we supporting them academically? So that they are, if they're not on grade level, that we're getting them to grade level, that they're proficient. And I would love to see the data for these students. Where are they, um, on the data? I mean, are they proficient? Are they below proficient? So those are the things that I'm really looking for, us to really support our students. And when you have knowledge, you actually make better decisions.
Of course. Yeah, we, you know, our, our department, we have a comprehensive behavior skills instructional component where they are teaching behavior skills, essential life skills, uh, through, through, through their connection classes or their lecture classes. So that's an ongoing thing that behavior specialists do at every single school. Um, the connection between academic performance, whether or not students are proficient, we can probably, um, it'll be very easy to probably connect that data. So we can just simply look at our five percent of our children. How much, what, what percentage of the five percent are proficient academically? We can definitely share that back out a little later on. That may give us a little bit, that may answer your question. But we haven't, we haven't, we haven't calculated it through our department. But we can, we can actually work with, uh, teaching and learning to get it.
Thank, thank you.
That's, that's a great point, Ms. Hill. Everything that we do should always come back to academic achievement because that's the true indicator of how successful our district is. So, great point.
Mr. Stricker, yeah, and Ms. Tellis. You can go first.
Okay. So really just one question. My colleagues did a very good job of asking some of the questions. Um, could you tell us which specific? And I think, uh, Mr. Christmas kind of touched on one of the schools. The schools or the grade levels where there's an increase in these, um, infractions? And what, how prevalent are they as far as?
Well, we, we had an anomaly at our high schools this year. So we had, uh, maybe three or four large group fights.
Okay.
Right, so you're talking six, seven, nine kids at one time.
So it's mostly our high schools?
Yeah, well, this particular year, what contributed to that data are three different incidents.
Gotcha.
So where we were last year, we were doing very well, but we had three particular incidents that contributed, that just raised that to that, to that percentage. Otherwise, if it was just three fights, then you're talking about just three, maybe six kids. But now you're talking over twenty kids.
Okay, and then one other question, just for me. Could you walk me through? Because I know when I was looking at the data, it said that there was a decrease in out-of-school suspensions, but a, a increase in in-school suspensions. So, um, could you tell me and walk us through what that process looks like? What does that entail? What are they doing on a daily basis? Um, how many days? What considers how many days they do in in-school suspension? And, um, what was the change?
Well, you know.
Increase and decrease.
If a student is being recommended for tribunal after a violent act on campus, it typically comes with ten days of out-of-school suspension. So that can increase the OSS, that number of days while you process the tribunal. The tribunal has to go through the fact-finding, the evidence process, and then, uh, then actual sending the parents the information so they have enough time to be able to attend the tribunal. And then you have the tribunal, then the kids are assigned to wherever they're going to be assigned to. So that typically takes upwards of ten days. That, that contribute to that now. And so students, you know, within, if it's an increase in indoor suspension, this, you know, the, the principal or whoever, who's issuing the consequence, is issuing the consequence in lieu of out-of-school suspension. So they, I'd rather you attend in-school suspension for a certain amount of time, but we don't want to send you home, we need you in school.
No, I guess what I'm trying to get to is kind of what Ms. um, Hill was saying as far as with their academics. When they're in this in-school suspension, they're still going through all of their course classes and everything that they need to. Okay.
Yes, they're still getting instruction daily in in-school suspension.
Okay.
So they should be completing their assignments while they're in school.
Gotcha.
Right.
Ms. Baker?
Um, again, I want to say thank you for the pep rally we had the other day. Um, I, I thought it was wonderful. Um, it did give me a chance to talk to a bunch of our, uh, DPI people, um, one-on-one. Um, I could call names, but I won't. But, um, I really appreciate your insight for me because it, it's a learning process for me too. Um, and then with that being said, I just want you to know that I'm going to be praying for each and every one of you more. Um, it's a lot of work and I think the numbers show. Um, there's increases and decreases, there's always going to be that. But they're the first line of defense to get these children so we don't lose them. And, um, I'm probably going to tick off some, but I'm going to do it anyway. Um, when we get ready to do this budget, I think there needs to be an expansion of this department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
All right, we need to.
Yes.
Yeah, I had, um, just two more. No worries. Um, I actually really like the Big Brother, Big Sister model and wanted to ask which Big Sister, Big Brother club is the partnership with?
Well, it's out of Atlanta.
So Big Sisters, Big Brother Atlanta.
We don't have, I, I, I.
We don't.
Look for it in Clayton, but we don't have it.
We sure don't. Um, and the reason I'm asking is they actually, in addition to that being a smart partnership for mentors, their in-house training for mentors is really helpful. And I think that's been a gap with the alumni work. So I really do want to connect because it sounds like it's a, a plug-and-play. And then my last, um, piece isn't actually a question. It's, I think we've talked about this before. The CAB program has been a brainchild for years. So I'm really excited it's been birthed, right? But one of the things that I've seen, because this works, this, this is a, an effective model. Having a resource, it's kind of like when we use our budget every year and we look at, um, we audit our programs for computers. And we say, wow, we spent all this money on this program, but the students don't log in. We should do away with that program. All that to say is like, having a thing is no good if we don't use it. So I'm hearing the conversation just now about how our scholars have what I call an advisory model. You call CAB, right? But every scholar has an advisory and a caring adult in the building. That's really, that is a step further than we were a year or two ago. Huge. But I want to challenge us, you know how you were, you kind of made it sound like, um, and I understand school site autonomy, but you were like, you know, principals, their schedules, you know? Some, some prioritize this, some don't. They've got to do it twice a year, but time in the day, yada, yada, yada. The only way I have seen this really proven, tested, effective model work is managed mandatory advisory group time. It's a schedule. I don't care if it's zero period, seven period, lunch period. I don't even care if it's one day a week, like Friday mornings or whatever. But the, the all-optional, only twice a year, um, makes it ineffective. And it's just like that computer program we waste and don't invest in, right? So I just want to acknowledge how awesome and exciting this is. The advisory model is effective. Um, but one thing I think that could enhance that is making sure, um, school sites know, you know, these things require incubators.
Yes, ma'am. Hold it.
That's all. Thank you. That was all for me.
I think that's, I think that's it for the questions. Dr. Smith?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Blocker. Thank you, uh, Dr. Ed Boona. This time I can get, uh, Ms. Sherry and Taylor to come down and give us an update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Vice Chair, board members, staff and community. I would like to provide for you an update on mental health this evening. Thank you so much, Dr. Ed Boona and Dr. Blocker for your updates as I get to ours as well. Am I going backwards?
Backwards.
You're going backwards.
Apologies. Now I'm going forward, apologies. Okay. All right, these updates are being brought to you on behalf of myself and Dr. Crawford. We want to remind you that student mental health remains central in Clayton County Public Schools. We are approaching mental health as a system of care. We've talked to you about this before with mental health not being by itself, but being a part of a comprehensive tiered approach. My colleagues have talked to you today about highlights that are a part of the system of care, such as engagement and discipline. We want to talk about those strong partnerships today as well and the data that we utilize to provide mental health services here in Clayton County. Our schools partner to advance resilience and knowledge. Our Spark Model since 2020 has been, um, here in Clayton County as a school-based model. We have grown to twenty-two partnerships with our community-based partners, all in Clayton County. So we're using our local providers to provide school-based supports. We do have providers such as Impact Therapy that have hired staff and they are in buildings every day. That's Kilpatrick Elementary and Rex Mill Middle School, where they provide daily support through their, uh, partnerships with us. And that is at no cost to those locations. To date, we have five hundred and forty-seven referrals. And those referrals are not only for community-based, uh, supports, but also small group and individual supports as well. Our executive functioning, which serves as our skills for life and learning, um, those small groups are delivered through the Spark Model as well. To date, we've had thirty-nine hundred hours of school-based interventions provided. Last school year, there was a total of one thousand eighty-eight just community-based referrals that were served at no cost to our families. So Clayton County Public Schools pays if you have insurance and you need to be able to pay that co-pay, that twenty dollars a week that's covered here in Clayton County. And we also have grant partnerships that support as well with the United Way. Going into the grant-funded conversations, we have through the school-based mental health, uh, program that is ending in December, interns that come from Kennesaw State and Georgia State. But as you know, that program is ending in December. However, the interns have volunteered to stay on in Clayton County for the remainder of their internship. They want to, uh, finish the programming that we've talked about and that they've dedicated their time to. So they will be coming on a volunteer basis to complete their programming, um, all the way through May. We have another grant that's a three-year grant. It is providing teletherapy through Daybreak. The Jesse Parker Foundation has granted us twenty-five thousand dollars annually for the next three years. And we have partnered with Daybreak Therapy to provide the virtual programs, alternative schools, Stillwell Elite, and all hospital homebound students with free therapy. They may get individual or small group or family therapy at no cost. Beyond the school day, we're, uh, offering school clubs because we'd like to work with our middle school and high school students who are interested in the field of psychology and who would like to be mentors in the area of mental health, working with us to provide mindfulness to younger students. So those after-school club experiences would begin in the spring. We would like to train our students for the remainder of fall. Those that have volunteered, we identified volunteers through the Walk, the Mental Health Walk. They will work with our school psychologists and student behavioral health specialists to provide after-school clubs. And I want to also highlight beyond the school days, we have two signature events, the Five K, which occurred in September and raised three thousand dollars for school mental health support. Those funds will be utilized to expand our teacher wellness rooms. We'll be able to provide four additional rooms. So Forest Park Middle School will finish the room there and we'll go on to Mount Zion High School as the next location. Additionally, we utilize data to, uh, look at our resources every school year and decide exactly where we're going to target our supports. Last school year, we had a total of one thousand six hundred and eighty-one safety and wellness assessments, as well as threat assessments. That is completed when a student says that I want to harm myself or someone else or if they are going to tribunal for, uh, experiencing threats. Those, um, incidences often result in Spark referrals and also therapy. We also work with the crisis team to provide support through CATES Club. If there is a student or teacher death, those, uh, CATES Club members come in and provide six weeks of grief therapy to our students free as well. Today, we've had two hundred and thirty safety assessments this school year alone. And those two hundred and thirty safety assessments have dealt mostly with self-harm. We do collaborate with safety and security to continue to provide that Gaggle support. As a reminder, Gaggle is the software-based program that monitors the student use. Last year, we had over nine hundred Gaggle reports that dealt with violence, sexual inappropriate content, drug use, and self-harm. To date, we're working again with safety and security to provide those supports with our after-hours team, which is made up of our counselors, social workers, behavior interventionists, and school psychologists. This department is also responsible for the annual suicide prevention training, which is offered through Jason Foundation. And I want to highlight that we are working, um, to address our social emotional learning through executive functioning and skills for life and learning. We're broadening the scope and focus for our students, not only working on, um, those regulation strategies with the computer, but working with our smaller students, our K-one students to first build those skills and with our grades two through twelve students in small groups, providing executive functioning through Spark, again, referral-based. In the spring of two thousand twenty-six, we will launch our SEL two point O, which will be less focused on our teachers having to do all of the lessons and more focused on our students having a student-led and driven path towards their own skills for life and learning. Just looking at some contacts, within the staff of this department are the school psychologists and student behavioral health specialists. Again, student behavioral health specialists deal specifically with mental health-related tasks. And your school psychologists are primarily focused on evaluation and working with students to provide individual mental health supports. To date, we To date, we've had over 3,000 contacts with the school psychologist and over 1,000 contacts with the student behavioral health specialist. I do want to highlight that those contacts are from your 15 school psychologists. Though they're experiencing a vacancy of 13, they've been able to keep up and provide those individual supports, as well as the evaluation supports to the students as well. Going into the wellness interventions and how we've expanded, we're still focused on our students through Spark and our small groups. We're making sure that we take care of our teachers as well. The wellness spaces are not just spaces. They are places where our teachers can go and get awareness and support. We have blood pressure machines available in there. We have a QR code where they can connect, and we can make sure that they're not just connecting with EAP, but they have an adult that can help walk them through the process of connecting with EAP as well. We're working on also bringing forth more wellness rooms. We have 24 complete rooms at this time. Our goal is all rooms. We're a finalist in the Kaiser Grant that we received last year. We're a finalist for it this year as well. And so we're hoping to get that $25,000 to finish out the rooms. And we're doing our teacher wellness pop-up activities, which are hands-on activities that are not just self-care, but giving our teachers financial wellness, physical wellness, making sure that we give them everything they need to be productive for our students. Just highlighting our 21 providers, we're very proud of these. Our community-based, right here in Clayton County, many of them starting with us from the beginning. And just some highlights and slides from our activities, showing our wellness space in the side and our 5K as well. Just some key takeaways. We are aligning our work to our priorities, our safety priorities. We're making sure that the impact is there, not only for our students, our families, and our staff. We're using data to ensure that this is sustainable, that we look at partnerships every year, and that this is not just a one-stop shop where we're going to community providers, but we're utilizing our internal supports, our counselors, our school psychologists, our behavior interventionists, and our school social workers to provide the supports as well. I'm going to pause here for any questions.
Ms. Taylor, thank you so much for the work that you do. The 13 vacant psychologist spots, what are we doing to, to close that gap?
We work with Georgia State to provide intern and practicum students that work with us yearly. We've now expanded that partnership to be with Capella, which is an online program. So this year, we have five students, two of which are interns that we have hired. Three are practicum students. We're working to obtain grant funding as well so that we can offer some incentives to make us a little comparable to our areas. But we continuously work to recruit, to go to national conventions, where now two of us are at the Georgia Association of School Psychologists right now advocating. We're very competitive with what we offer here professional development-wise. If you're a school psychologist, you can gain your licensure here. You're able to just really grow. So we're just working really hard. But it is a national shortage at this time. You have some districts with seven psychologists in surrounding areas. You have people with vacancies of 16. What I can say and I'm proud of is in Clayton County, these people have been here for over 10 years. Majority of the staff, they're loyal. And so we will get new staff in. I'm just proud that we retain our staff as well.
Good deal. Do we have a partnership with Clayton State University in regards to their psychology department?
Unfortunately, there is one school psychologist program in the state of Georgia right now that is producing school psychologists, and that's Georgia State.
Georgia State.
Yes, Georgia Southern has gone to a doctoral program, and so has UGA.
Gotcha. Ms. Williams.
How you doing, ma'am?
I have a question about the Spark Program.
Yes, ma'am.
How long is it taking for the students to request assistance to actually receive the counseling?
So once the student requests assistance and their parent signs the referral, because that's the important part, they have to sign, it is 24 hours for the provider to make contact with that family and staff them. So 24 hours, we have in our MOU, you have to make contact with the family and staff them, offer staffing. From there, the agency runs insurance and lets us know if we need to do any funding. So within 48 hours, they have to let us know. In total, it should be no more than 72 hours between you've made a referral and someone showing up at the school to provide services pending the parent's signature.
If somebody has like a, an instant issue, then they just go through Safety and Security or something like that? Like with students with something like this, you know, like need to be handled now?
That would be the school-based staff. So we utilize them as tier one, your counselor, your social worker, your psychologist. They would make sure you're safe. If you're in immediate danger, they will call what's called Georgia Mobile Crisis, and they would have a conversation with that person to see if you needed 911 support.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Baker.
I don't know if you can quickly do this, I'm sorry. I don't know if you can quickly go over this, or if it's something that you can send us later, and either way is fine. The Daybreak Program, I'd like some more information about that.
I can do both, just quickly. I can send you more, definitely, so you can read up about it. But Daybreak is a teletherapy program that is HIPAA compliant. We heard about this program from the Jesse Parker Foundation, so they were vetted first from the funding source. They've partnered with Fulton and Gwinnett as well to provide through their community schools, their teletherapy for community schools in those areas. Daybreak has clinicians that are licensed professional counselors and licensed clinical social workers. They give us an account manager. That account manager trains the staff at the school to utilize Daybreak's onboarding. And from there, the teletherapy is set up to be secure. So the school has to provide a space. If it is a school, so Elite and Stillwell are our only locations where the student is there. Teletherapy at home for the virtual and alternative school students, the parents have to give a secure site. But I can definitely send more information.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board Members?
I just wanted to invite all the, your whole team and all the child do, all the caregivers to yoga. Yeah, Wednesday, yoga, fourth Wednesday of every month. But not only as a modality for all the incredible spaces you're setting up, but just so that you're poured back into. So, but anyway, thanks for all that you're doing for your presentation tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Ms. Vivens.
Ms. Vivens, you're with us on Saturday, right, for the retreat?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Staff and Community. This evening, I have your monthly financial report on your budget to actual comparisons as of September 30th. We have collected $57.7 million, or 7.9% of our budgeted revenues, and we've expended $108.1 million, or 14.9% of our budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year. Of the revenue, 0.9% of that is coming in local taxes. Of course, the tax bills just went out, so we should begin receiving some of those funds soon. And then the other local revenue and QBE funding. I want to ask any questions on this report, if you have any questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Baker.
I'm one of those lucky people who got my tax bill. Usually, they've been due like, I want to say November 15th, and now it says December 1st. How is that going to affect us?
So I have, we have some three-on-threes scheduled tomorrow.
Okay.
And to discuss that. So yes, the tax bills were supposed to go out in September, towards the end of September, but they did not go out until later in October, which puts the date, the due date from November to December.
Okay.
This is a bit of a one-off year, but in our meetings, we can give a thorough explanation in terms of what's going on with the Tax Commission's office. But you are absolutely right, it's a delay.
Ms. Hill.
Yes. Just, I have to, wanted to know, do we have an update on our, our audit?
The fiscal year '24 audit is complete. And we got it back. And we will have, I'm going to speak with the auditor to come and give you an update at the next work session.
Okay.
So we did get that back. We have four findings. We went from eight to four. Some of them are repeat findings. As I told Dr. Smith and Cabinet, the one that really concerned me the most that we've had over the past three or four years was the cash reconciliation. That one is gone.
Okay.
Yes.
And so my other question is, I understand here my colleague that the tax bill is, was out, and it doesn't come till December. And I'm looking at our fund balance at this particular time. Is that something that we need to be concerned about? Or do you find that from your expertise and where we are, and looking at this fund balance, what does that look like?
So again, we're going to talk about this tomorrow, how that impacts. Because when we, our fund balance, our cash usually carries us through November, when we get that infusion of taxes. But we're going to talk about that tomorrow, how the delay in taxes is going to impact us.
I love that we're going to talk about that tomorrow, but we are out of, this is the public. This is, I mean, I'm confused. I'm sorry. And I'm, I'm really understanding that tomorrow we'll talk. And what happens is when we leave these meetings, I get questions about why wouldn't, why didn't we talk about that? Why is this a secret? And, and if I'm out of order and I'm misunderstanding, I really would like clarification for why we're waiting till tomorrow. Because we, we're here today, and I'm looking at it, and I'm, and I'm, and I want to be able to answer it. I had an advisory council meeting, and you know, some of the questions, and I don't know how accurate it is, but just when Colin Kaepernick was in our community, it was said that they believed that we spent $200,000 for whatever he was offering. And I can't answer that, but I really want us to continue to make sure that answers are available to the public.
As far as the Colin Kaepernick and the $200,000, I'm not aware that Dr. Smith can address that. To my knowledge, we did not spend any money on that. I haven't seen anything come across my desk or any of my staff members' desks on that. So I would have to yield to Dr. Smith on that.
Question. I think, I'm thinking about, this was what I was going to say before Ms. Hill's comment, but I think there's, they're connected. Respectfully, the three-on-three meetings are kind. And I'm glad that some board members have some place to go for answers. They are also during the workday. And some colleagues work. And I think it's awesome when we invite you to a meeting that works for our schedules, you know, versus always being assumed that we are available for meetings based on y'all's schedules, respectfully. So last week's three-on-three, which never works for my schedule anyway, didn't happen. They were canceled tomorrow, and I hear that tomorrow is going down. That sounds great, but I'm going to miss out again. They're not recorded, and it's not a formal committee. It's our district's attempt at sharing the same information with all nine, even though, you know, you can get a lot more targeted in a committee, but I digress. So I just wanted to, I, I think they're connected. Even if you, for some reason, don't feel comfortable expanding this evening, I would love an opportunity to be asked when our schedules work to hear more about these really important topics.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. And I, I'm always available if you're not available on the days that the...
Yes, we try to, you know, we, we...
Oh, it's not, it's not about the days. It's not about the days.
Schedule times that, that, that we provide for board members to be able to access and gain more knowledge and ask robust, robust, in-depth questions and gain information to go back out and share with your constituents. But we also avail ourselves when a request is made of us to accommodate a specific board member's time.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. My comment, though, is not about the premise. This is great. Nobody has challenged you or our team on that practice. I wanted to update you all that you can see that there's not 100% participation, no judgment, and my kind, respectful invitation this evening is that moving forwards, that we all get equal opportunities, especially because your answer is, I'll talk to you tomorrow. You said that. That wasn't, and so we're, we're unbothered by the fact that we can wait 24 hours. I just wanted you to know, even still, even if y'all talk about it tomorrow, all of the minds around this table still won't know unless there's another way to hear from you. That's all. But thank you again, and I really appreciate the small groups.
Ms. Vivens, question for you. This Saturday, we have a scheduled retreat, correct? That retreat is public.
Yes.
Will you be covering these items at that retreat?
I will, yes.
Okay.
And we have to go by this set agenda, and you know, it's difficult to try to shift and pivot to request on the fly. That's, that's a bit unfair, but we try to make certain that we have as many communication opportunities as possible, and we avail ourselves to accommodate personal schedules, and we allow for information to get to the constituents and the general public through many opportunities, work sessions, board meetings, retreats, and whatever else that the board members may deem an opportunity for us to provide more information to the general public. We will certainly try to accommodate those opportunities.
Dr. Haney.
Thank you. Just, just three questions I posed before didn't get a response because you all were in conferences or whatever it may be. But is the district posting monthly financial reports?
They're not on the website, no ma'am.
Okay, so that answers that. So is the district reporting timelines for budget resolutions?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Is the district reporting timelines for budget, budget resolutions?
So when you say timelines for budget?
Like, just to let us know what is going on, let the public know how we're coming up. Because it always seems to be at the budget time, everything goes down, rather than just having a timeline as to what's going on, as of what Ms. Hill stated, as of the transparency, so they can see. Because what is happening is that there's rumblings within these advisory council meetings that we aren't being transparent until budget time, and then the allotted time they have to make a response. So I was just making sure. And also, the reason I was posing these questions, I was reading and listening to our superintendent, Richard Woods, and he was stating this is what he wants districts, board members to start doing as of districts, having this information posted. And he has charged board members to have this information out there, as well as districts. And it's our responsibility, that board members, to have that governance over that. So I just want to make sure that Clayton's, what we're supposed to be doing, is compliant to what he is now requesting. And this has just been recently reported, as I was reading some of his reports, that he just made a big address on. So I just want to make sure that we are transparent, and there's Ms. Hill and Ms. Bowles, so we can't keep waiting and wait. And I understand your point, Dr. Smith, and I don't like to do the gotchas and all this. But I need honesty when the public is looking at us, listening to us, and they catch us off guard, and we're asking, they're asking us questions. And I just want us to be in sync to what we're saying versus what you're telling us versus what we're reading. And so I just want that, just to be consistent. Along when we have these budget advisory committees, we need to kind of rethink that and how we're strategizing those meetings, because what has been coming back to me through my meetings and just conversations with D5 is just a listening session. So I just want that to be a little bit more robust, a little bit more challenging to those members who're taking out their time, because they're citizens and they pay these taxes, to be able to have a little bit more input year-round, not just at budget time. So we can just do those things. I just want Clayton to be in compliance. I don't want us to be back in 1902 when this man is trying to push us to 2025, 26. I just want us to be more consistent in what we're doing and what we're saying. And there's no slight, please understand, there's no shade, no slight to your department. It's just that I just want to see that, and I'm sure other colleagues, I can't speak for them, but I'm sure we're all in sync that we just want to see the consistency and transparency of all.
Yes, ma'am. I will say that the monthly financial reports that we present at the board meeting is in your board packets. I believe that is posted on the website and for the public to go out and look at as well. So even though it's not a particular place in, say, under financing, which we can change that. I can put it under there as well every month, because we do post the budget out there every year, as well as the annual financial audits, once we get them. We, we post those out there for the public to see as well. We can, in addition to posting this under, publishing it with the board agenda, we can also post it on that once the board has reviewed it. it on that once the board has reviewed it and voted on it and has considered agenda, we can then post it after that. That's what I did in office at the county. So I don't have a problem doing that. But it is available to the public by way of people, when they can go out there and put the agenda down and look at the attachment. So it is available for the public and the same exact information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great point. Board members, I would ask that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I had one more.
Go for it.
Um, I wonder if I was looking at something wrong, but, and I don't know the name association, but some of the tech features that stood out to me from this purchasing was, I'm really excited about our cybersecurity investment that we're making. But I did see the AI piece for about 200K and just wanted to close that loop because, but, but maybe I'm, you know, a contract update or something. But I feel like in the purchasing report, just to answer Ms. Hill's, okay, Ms. Hill's question specifically, I believe that there was an investment made from those visits and that we have it here. Am I misreading something?
I'm looking here and saying, because I don't remember.
Okay. Lumi, Looney, am I conflating or thinking of the wrong vendor?
Was it under the contracts that the board has to approve?
Maybe.
Technology? Hold on.
But yeah, I was, I just thought.
No, it's not there. The only thing I see under technology that's over the $100,000 that the board has to approve is them exercising the third or full one-year renewal options with education networks for their E-rate reimbursement.
Okay. Where was even the piece about the, we're about to prop up a whole one-stop shop cybersecurity program. I think it was in that same report, which is exciting stuff.
That's over, I don't know, hold on, let me look back here. Was it for technology?
You would know, but I just wanted to confirm that that contract exists.
So board members, we have a retreat this Sunday, Saturday, and the finance department is actually featured on that, on that agenda. One of the things that I personally would like is for us, and I'm saying us, just us, to start really nailing down our board priorities. We own the board, we own the budget, we own it. So we need to have deep discussions on exactly what we want to see in the budget with the assistance of the staff. Notice I said with the assistance of the staff. So we need to come up with our priorities together, number one. And like Ms. Hill has alluded to earlier, it's just my personal opinion, those budget priorities should really center around academic achievement. So those are the things that for the next few weeks, I'm going to be working with each and every one of you to see when we can get those togetherness so that before they began to dictate the budget to us, we could have some ideas of what we want to see.
We recommend the budget, we don't dictate.
That's true. Recommend, dictate, tell, whisper.
Those are drastically different.
Whatever it is, whatever it is, we need to be ahead of that game with the budget process. And that's going to begin this Saturday when you give us ideas of exactly where you're at with figuring out where, where the budget is going for the next year.
Yes, sir. And also, Ms. Bowles, your question, Mr. Sykes, our chief of technology, said that was on last month's.
Thank you.
Purchasing reports. That's why we couldn't find it on there.
Makes sense.
And it was approved at last month's, at the last meeting.
Perfect. I remember they were together, so thank you.
And as we prepare for November 1st, when we have come together, I still would like to have a clear understanding of our open enrollment and healthcare costs and what does that look like for the district or if that is something that has been, that will be incurred by our employees. Also, I'd like to have more information that I noticed that we don't get updates on our federal dollars with the shutdown and the impact that that's having. And where is that shortfall coming from, if there is a shortfall? So just like our Title II, our Title III, our Title IV, all of those, I understand, are federal dollars? The services, have they ceased? Have they stopped? And again, back to our core business of academics, are these impacted because we don't have federal dollars? And if not, please share out with the board how we are compensating and ensuring that there is no interruption in the needs for our children.
Ms. Hill, I would ask, did you email the superintendent in regards to those points so that they can be prepared on Saturday?
No, I did not.
But you will.
I'm happy to do that.
Fantastic.
And this, and my federal question has been ongoing for over a year.
Okay. All right. So any questions that we have that need to be discussed on Saturday, please get those, those emails over to the superintendent so that he can communicate with the finance department and they can be better prepared to have that discussion with us on Saturday. Okay, you can move.
Next, we have the SPOS report, revenue collection report. In the month of September, we received revenue that was collected in August of 6.2 million or 6.3 million dollars. And as you can see, compared to last year, it's a little more than what we've collected at the same time last year and around the same amount for the last two months. And we're still on target to meet the projected collections for our SPOS revenue.
Ms. Hill.
Thank you for that. And I just have to ask, can we please explain the SPOS again? I just think that there's sometimes a confusion that people think that our SPOS can be used for other operations within our district and is specifically for, if you capital A. But if you could, please.
Yes, no problem. So the SPOS is a special purpose local option sales tax. It's a penny sales tax if the vote is approved in a referendum. And these funds provide, it's the primary source of funding for the districts for all of our capital needs, for any school bus purchases, building facilities, any of those things that are capital items. And it's a way for us to fund those items without having any additional burden on the taxpayer through way of another abaloma property tax. So that penny sales tax is paid by anyone that shops in the county. And I always tell everyone, think about the airport. Millions of people come through that airport every day or throughout the year and they are, they are buying things. So they pay a penny sales tax, that penny from there comes to us.
And technology's included in that?
Yes, technology also, yes. Computer purchases, yes, sir. Textbooks. And this year, we have school uniforms, not school uniforms, athletic uniforms and band uniforms included as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, move.
And then the last item I have is the purchasing report. So we have Report A, which are consumables. Report B are the non-consumables that are greater than $10,000 but less than $100,000. And then Report C are those contracts that are greater than $100,000 that require board approval. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on, any of those on the purchasing report.
Any questions in regards to the purchasing report?
I apologize, but I do have a question. Just one of our technology purchases, just wanted to know if we were taking advantage of the E-rate for that particular purchase?
Which purchase, which purchase is it, Ms. Hill?
The communication system upgrade.
Okay.
As far as on this purchasing report, that would not be us. That would be facilities maintenance. But I can tell you as far as E-rate goes in the district, I'm sorry, good evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Vice Chair members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Snuff. I can tell you for E-rate purchases, we maximize our E-rate funding in both Category 1 and Category 2 every five years. We get, we get audited every time because we get such a large amount of E-rate funding because we're able to maximize all of that funding. And we roughly get, you know, between 10 to 14 million dollars per five-year cycle out of E-rate funds.
Thank you. Excellent.
I have a quick question for Mr. Sykes, Mr. Chair, if I may, just really quick. Mr. Sykes, one of the constituents approached you about the Chromebooks. And I want to know, probably the board as well, how much is it to basically repair or how do you all do that? What's the cost of repairing these Chromebooks? Because it's been, let me just explain the backdrop. Parent called, said, Dr. D, my child's Chromebook barely works in class, school. They have to use their personal computers for homework, schoolwork, and we need some resolve. And she was able to get in touch with Mr. Sykes. Thank you for addressing that parent. But could you just give the general public some information regarding that, the cost and all that? And what's the resolve that you told that parent so that everybody can hear it as well?
Yes, so as far as Chromebooks go in the district, when those Chromebooks are purchased, we purchase them with different warranty services wrapped around it. One of those is, it comes with a five-year warranty on anything that would go wrong, such as just a part going bad. We also purchase it with five years of accidental damage protection, which would protect against an accidental drop, maybe a spill, something like that. And that's built into the cost of those Chromebooks that we purchased. So I don't know those figures right off the top of my head, but to, to think of it this way, where it may be an additional $25 per Chromebook for those, that five-year time period. And during that time, if anything's reported wrong with that device that's turned in at the school level, we try and fix it at the school to reduce downtime. We can't fix it at the school, we send it off-site to be repaired by a third-party vendor off-site to do any repair that they can and that nature. So that's, that's really how it goes.
Is there a co-pay or a deductible for that?
No, because the, it's all built in, it's all baked into that, that cost. So we do that so that way our students don't have to pay anything additional to get that taken care of. Now, there are situations where it may be the third time water damage has happened on a device or if it looks like, I mean, there's a difference between dropping something two or three feet off the ground and dropping something off the second story of their house or something like that. So that vendor does do an assessment to, to see, is that something that, you know, is, does it cost more? Really, the question comes down to, does it cost more to repair the device than it would to replace the entire device?
Is there any cost to the parents?
Currently, well, the only time there's cost to the parents is if it's determined to go outside of that accidental damage protection to where if, and that's a very broad coverage. So it's usually something very extensive of, you can really tell it's intentionally damaged.
How is that, how is that communicated to the parents?
We work with the school to, so the school can communicate it with the parents.
Is that, is that expressed to them or is there a form that they fill out when they're receiving the, the Chromebook?
It's, it's part of the form that's signed every, at the beginning of each school year.
And the parent is actually signing that?
It's a digital signature.
Okay.
So, but we will not send a device home unless that paperwork's been signed.
Good deal.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes, for transparency. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
That's it? That's all?
That's it? Thank you.
I guess, um. Ms. Crawford is representing Mr. Joseph tonight.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chair, Madam Board Chair, members of the board, Dr. Smith, Superintendent, and the Clayton County Community. You have received the monthly capital improvements report that includes our executive summary, which notes the $10.95 million that was dispersed in payments. Also included is the board summary report, which is a status update of all of our current projects, as well as our capital purchasing report.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, go ahead, Ms. Hill. Ms. Hill, then Dr. Haney.
Okay. Thank you so much. It's great to see you this evening. I just have two questions on our North Clayton High School, and we need it. I agree 100%. We need it. I just want to know, have we projected the expense of what it would take for us to manage and maintain that property once it is built? And do we have a expected return on our investment? And you may not have that information now, but I would really like to have a clear understanding, especially when we're talking about budget, that has to be delayed, although I know SPOS and our general is different. But just because we have to really, really hone in on our fiscal responsibility, and I'd like to have more information so I can better understand where we're headed. Thank you.
Completely understood. I presume you're referring to the golf course component. There are internal, there are internal conversations to try and determine what is the operation cost and maintenance cost for a deliverable such as that? And we'll get the information back to you.
Okay. I wasn't speaking of anything specific, but just an understanding. And also, I know when we started this project, that there was a survey from our community or a meeting with our community. And this may be for you, Dr. Smith, if there's some way to get feedback from our community as to what their position is with the golf course and whatever we're doing in that area. So again, I know you may not have it tonight, but I would just like to hear more.
Yes, ma'am. We're looking to have a community meeting, actually next week, along with board members who want to participate. I guess if it's in your district or any board members, along with delegation members and commissioners that support that particular community. They were wanting to do it this week, but it just didn't work out. So we're looking to nail down the date for next week that we will send out this week, informing the community that we're available to answer questions or concerns or get input from the community as that development is underway.
Thank you.
Ms. Crawford, are you, you're, you're doing your presenting on this Saturday's board, board retreat, correct?
Correct.
And items like this will be discussed at the retreat?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
I just want to clarify, I believe you are a North Clayton graduate, are you not?
Absolutely.
So when we're talking about the great things that happen in Clayton County, Ms. Crawford and Mr. Joseph.
Yes.
But, you know, Jonesboro, go Jonesboro. But anyway, I won't start a fight with Jesse tonight.
So this is personal for you?
Absolutely, this is personal.
Got you. Ms. Dr. Haney?
I just had a quick question. Where is the new communications studio located? Where is it at? I don't know.
It is at the South Lake office, which is directly across the street from the new communications center.
Okay, all right. That's fine. Thank you.
Right. If there's any questions in regards to the construction and the due dates of these projects, if there's, if there's anything specific, please email the superintendent so that he can get it over to Ms. Crawford and she could be better prepared for the retreat on Saturday.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, other members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Smith, colleagues and community members. The personnel changes report summarizes all personnel actions for the period of September 11th through October 10th, 2025. Human resources updates were submitted to the Board of Education for your review. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions, board members?
Yes, I just have two questions and thank you, Ms. Albritton. I noticed that on this report that there were three new general funded positions. And I just want to know if we could have specific on what positions they were, what their student needs, and how does it align with our current budget constraints?
Yes, I will partner with Business Services to provide it.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions, board members? Seeing none, we'll move to the next topic, which is going to be board matters. All right. Board members, we have a first read for policy series A. I will be having changes for that. Let me go through the process. In changing any of these policies. In changing any of these policies, please give your recommendations and your suggestions. You can, um, email those over to, um, Damaris's department. Latasha? Oh, okay. So get those emails over to, to Latasha for any changes that we have. They then will look into those changes and see if they're appropriate based off of state law. They then will communicate with, with, um, Clem to make sure that, um, everything is, is, is copesthetic. Then we will have a discussion on those changes. So the changes that I'm going to be, um, offering for next week, which is going to be the board meeting, you guys will see those changes. I'll actually get them over to you way in advance so that we could start our discussion via email. So that when we get here, we can have a brief discussion. And then I believe that the following work session or the following board meeting, we then will vote on any of the changes that we come up. Remember, series, I'm going to combine all of these now so that I don't have to go through each individual one. But policy series A, policy series B, and policy series C, which are all in its first read, are board specific policies. So we should deeply be looking into those policies if we want to see any changes in regards to those policies. Um, also, policy series G, which is the third read, we'll be voting on that next Monday. So be prepared to, to vote on the policy series G. I know that Ms. Goree said that she wanted to meet with the superintendent to have any discussion in regards to any changes. Has she, has she met with you in regards to any of those changes? All right, well, when we come to, to, to the table next Monday, I need everybody to be prepared to vote for that. Okay, okay, all right.
I have a few changes. Should I just mail them to?
Right, yeah, you, you mail them over there. Um, I believe that, that Ms. Garrett's department will shape it up in the document and then share it with all of us. We'll get to read that. And then if I have a question for you, I'll reach out to you and, or email you so that everybody else can, can chime in on those changes. All right. Yeah, I got to go back. All right, so, um, next, uh, so I, I told you about policy series G. We'll be voting on that November 3rd. Let me back up a little bit because I did skip an item, which we started talking about at the beginning of the, the, um, meeting. That's the RFQ 26 dash one, construction materials, testing and inspection services. And that's going to be on the consent agenda for next Monday. That document or that RFQ is missing one of the vendors that is supposed to be on there and was a mistake. You, you overlooked that when adding them. They're going to add that, get it over to Ms. Biles. She'll update that, get it back on E board for all of us to look at. And then we will vote on that come next Monday. Does any of the board members have a problem with that? All right, so getting back, this is, now this discussion that we're going to have with the student calendar, I want, I want you guys to ask questions in regards to this, but I don't think that we'll be able to sort that out this evening. But let's get the questions on the table so that we can at least get that discussion going. And before I do that, let me see if I can streamline this. Mr. Charles, Mr. White, if you don't mind giving us an update on where you're at with the, um, student calendar and the board, board meeting, board meeting calendar? Board meeting calendar is us, all right? You, you're not involved with that, right? No, okay, just the student calendar.
Just the student calendar, yes, sir. I wouldn't think of trying to tell you guys when to meet, I will tell you that. Uh, basically where we are is we're working up a general information first level survey that's going to go out later this week. That'll be going to adults and to students, asking them and providing them with the same options that you received, uh, the three options that you received, uh, the two for, uh, 26, 27, and the one for 27, 28. And asking them their opinion, wanting to get suggestions, just a general idea of how they, they can be reformatted, if in fact they can be reformatted. Uh, the, the very important thing to note is that we were dealing with 180 days for students and 190 days for teachers. And we have a certain timeframe to, to work within. One thing I will tell you very quickly is the fact I've done a little bit of research. And the last time, the, the latest that our school district has gone into session, uh, since the year 2000, 1999, 2000 school year was back in August 25th. Since that time, we have slowly, over the course of the two decades, moved our starting date closer and closer to the first of August.
Right.
However, the last time that we closed school in June was the same year. Ever since then, we have been within the magical date of May 31st. And that seems to be the important element in how we have put our calendars together. We start in August and we end before May 31st. That's the way it's been for 25 years, roughly.
Gotcha. Can you tell me a little bit about the committee that you have together to actually come up with, with these calendar recommendations?
Committee of different people, leaders in a school district. And we also have been contacting and have reached out to students. The, uh, superintendent's student council, in fact, one of the things we dealt with was to give them the opportunity to take a look at it. They're going to be one of the first groups that we send our survey to, to get the idea from how the students are, are looking at it. If you notice that, uh, one of the count, one of the calendars starts on Monday, uh, in 26, 27. This other calendar starts on Tuesday. These students, uh, it wasn't unanimous, but the majority of the students wanted to start on Tuesday. They weren't really excited about starting on Monday of the week. That was something that they had indicated. Uh, we're also trying to get an idea as to, uh, break time, when they liked it, when, when, where, where they like to see the breaks fall, that kind of thing. We received some recommendations in the spring that they think there needs to be some manipulation to provide some break time for students and staff during that long stretch from, uh, from February to spring break. And so we're going to, we're, so those were some suggestions that came out of that meeting.
Right, can you, can you, I'll, I'll be right with you. Can you also expedite those, those calendars to our, um, board interns? And we're going to require you at the next meeting to give us a presentation in regards to your, your, your thoughts and recommendations from a student perspective. So that's going to be an assignment for you guys at the next work session.
We'll make sure that the interns are included in our, uh, survey.
Good deal.
That gives them that opportunity to see everything.
And teachers, are there any teachers that are giving input?
Teachers are going to, we're going to be sending these out to the, uh, teachers of the year. And we also have some other teachers that were a part of our discussion last year that we're bringing back onto the group and working with them. We're also going to be bringing this up at our classified employee advisory, as well as the certified employee advisory. Those meetings are coming up within the next, uh, next week or so, next 10 days.
Good deal. Net, last question before I pass it off to my board members. Um, when is our prospective, um, time of completion with this?
We really would like to be able to put you at least some options for you to look at and to make some, uh, action on. I'm hoping before, at the next work session.
At the next work.
We're going to do our very best to pull that off.
Okay, Ms. Baker?
Are we going to be using the EB or ELBC DAs as also, um, teacher training days?
Those were placed on the calendar because what these, these three options were based on this year's calendar. Because I had not received any, uh, discussion from anyone in our committee at the time that we first met, that they needed to be removed or that they needed to be expanded, or if we were going to use a different format. I, I have not heard from, and I think one of the things that we want to do in our discussion is to find out how beneficial these days have been this year. And whether they have, if they've been beneficial, how we can make use of them again in the future to help enhance our teacher training.
Okay, because I mean, if you can do two things at once, it seems like a great thing. And you know me, you can move that date another week back in August to start later, not earlier. And I know, I know all your problems, but at the end of the day, you know me, and I'm just going to say it.
Well, one of the things that might be beneficial is the fact that we have our own convocation center. So that may be able to adjust or come up with a way of dealing with the, the process of scheduling graduation, because we, we always try to make sure that we can get graduation in, at the end of school, in before Memorial Day weekend or definitely before May 31st. We may have to think about crossing that meridian in order to move the starting date back, but we can take that into account as well.
Okay, um, I'm looking at the calendar here. I'm going to get right with you, Ms. Williams. I'm looking at the calendar here and it looks like we're going to have a board meeting and a work session on December 1st. Looks like it's going to be one meeting. Okay, is, will we be ready to vote on December 1st for the calendars? Can, can we be ready for that?
I think you can. We're going to try to pull a couple of meetings together, uh, Zoom meetings that will help facilitate everyone being able to be present. I think the fact that we are meeting with our advisories in the next, this week and next week, I think that, that fact is, uh, going to carry a lot of weight because that gives us access to a lot of employees that can help chime in on what we're doing. And hopefully we can float a secondary survey out during the timeframe to get, uh, as we get more information in to fill out the calendar.
Good deal, Ms. Williams.
So these are the calendar you gave us is literally just, one is Monday, one is Tuesday, and everything else is exactly the same. And so after you get the, um...
There were again, I'm sorry, man.
The calendar, the option one, option two, the only difference is, uh, starting on Monday, starting on Tuesday?
Uh, there, that is one of the changes. The other change was fact that we, uh, we added a, uh, we added a, a, another break day uh, in the winter, uh, break, uh, on that, uh, that second calendar for 26, 27 in the winter. Uh, we, we, we kind of expanded that as something extra. I think what we were looking at, that we were taking into account the indication that there was a desire to, to come back on Monday or, uh, to come back on Tuesday. We were looking at that. We also have to take into account that in 2026, we will be looking at a midterm, well, we're looking at a midterm election coming up in 2026. And so that means that we're, we're potentially losing a day during fall semester if the decision is made to go with only a student, a teacher learning day or staff development day, uh, rather than having students in school because of the number of schools that are used as polling places.
Okay, I just wanted, um, I got an email from a, a teacher that had a, a suggestion. I just want to throw out there so it can be heard, that during February, to make that a full week in February and then extend the last week to, to the end of the week for school in May, and then get rid of the ELBC days. Cause they says the kids can't bring on their Chromebooks, they're not doing the work anyway. That's just the email I received. And I'm just putting it out there that, thank you.
I, I appreciate that. One of the things I will point out is that if you go and take a look at all of the calendars that we've got, uh, going, uh, in, in metro Atlanta, uh, you will tell, you will see that just about every school district is starting in early August and they're ending before the 31st of May. And those, and it's just a different way of manipulating their leave days. Uh, they, some of them don't use full weeks for staff leave. Uh, they may do it for student leave and some of them don't do it even for student leave. So it's just a way that you can work around the idea of those. Right now we've got 29, between 27 and 29 weekdays that we take off during the course of the school year, from August to, uh, May, of the, the following May. So it's how we manipulate those days that can make some differences and maybe change the way that we, uh, set up our school year.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Good deal, thank you. Um, Adrian, so the board, board interns are going to have to do a Zoom call for the board members in order to analyze the calendar and give us student recommendations. I would like that to be done next week, towards the latter part of next week. Board members, I need each and every one of you to be ready for December 1st. So as many questions as you have, recommendations, advice, get that out to, to Mr. White's department so that we can be prepared on December 1st to, um, approve a calendar. All right, um, the board meeting calendar, we're going to put that on hold because according to Ms. Blackwood, she has to wait until we have a student calendar in order to come up with a board meeting calendar. All right, so that, that'll be put on hold. That, we'll, we'll have both of those items together as we, as we, um, talk about December 1st. The time now is 8:37 and I'm, um, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You guys are ready to go, right? All right, just one more item. This should be quick. I need an, um, a motion for the approval of the proposed board meeting agenda for November 3rd. Ms. Baker? And, um, it's been seconded by Ms. Bowles. Can I get a vote? The time now is 8:38. You guys can leave.